Good evening. Thank you all for being so patient this evening. We ran just slightly late, about an hour. But we're moving forward at this point, so I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council meeting to order at this time. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) At this time, could we have roll call, please?
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Keon.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Spencer.
Here.
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If there's anyone from the public here who wishes to make a comment at this point, you could step forward and state your name and address at the microphone.
Steve Krueger, 943 Clovis Avenue. I want to discuss the parking in the downtown with all the new construction and everything. The council has approved $4 million for the parking for a new building going up. Talked about $300,000 now to replace parking that the taxpayers have already sat there and paid for once. And the Spartan, and the customer parking for the businesses and everything else is getting really, really sparse, including the handicap parking. There's only four handicap parking stalls that are scheduled to be slated for the downtown, in front of the whole entire downtown. And I think the council needs to start concentrating on the existing businesses and the existing parking situation that's down there. As far as the resolution, the R3515 that you guys will be voting on tonight for the replacement, the taxpayers already paid for these parking stalls once. Back in 1987, they paid $1.1 million for a complete project which included those parking. Now, the taxpayers didn't take away the parking stalls. The developers insisted that that parking ramp go there. They took away the parking stalls, and now the taxpayers have to sit there and pay another $300,000 to replace parking stalls that they already gave. This is, this is ridiculous. And when is this going to end, when the taxpayers having, when the council paints itself into a corner, the taxpayers always seem to have to pay. The last thing we're going to say is that letter that was given by the developers. You guys had the letter up there, and it's there and stated that the city gave very little help to the developers in this project. I would consider eight to 10.5 million dollars, a lot more than very little help, and not one person sat there and spoke up for the taxpayers on that. You guys have to reconsider this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak this evening?
All right. My name's Tyler Damo. I've spoken here before. 57 Appleton Street, Manassia, Wisconsin. So I was reading the paper Thursday, and I read something called "The Loop Trail." I had not even heard of this loop trail idea yet until Thursday. I've talked to some people about it and all that, and, you know, a trip, loop trail is a great idea, but you're looking at some key points here that, you know, taxpayers have to fork up money for this loop trail, which is expensive, and we need to think about what we're spending. And we're bypassing our downtown area with this loop trail. It does not go to our downtown area, where it goes to Nina's. Nina benefits from this trail more than we even do. We need to think about rearranging the layout of this. So it does, you know, we put up Gilbert's Trail, a beautiful trail in the progress of making right now. It's there. We need to incorporate it in this, so it can come to our downtown area, so these tourists that come for biking, running, all these events, get to our downtown area to support those businesses that we are trying to encourage to install, to put up in our downtown area. You know, if I was a business owner down there, and I have a neighbor who is, I would personally feel a little bit left out all of a sudden, because you're sticking up for Nina and letting them get the big perks out, yet the City of Manassia's taxpayers are paying for it. They're paying to draw people into the downtown Nina area now, whereas we are left out. And then another thing that you guys are voting on tonight is the city healthcare, which I did a little reading too. I didn't get all my questions answered yet upon it, but looking into it and all that. For the, I envision, I know this one for sure because it clearly stated it in there, that the city pays 90% of the bill where the employees pay 10%. That's ridiculous in 2015 and 16. I appreciate everything that our fire department, police department, and city workers do. I appreciate them greatly. But I don't think it's fair to ask taxpayers to pay their paychecks and to pay 90%. The average American employer pays 60%, and that's on the high end. 60% is what they average to pay. We're forking up a majority of their healthcare. Where families, I know, struggle to pay healthcare bills. I have friends, family, I've gone through great medical strides in my family with brothers and siblings, and I've seen medical bills that are massive. And the fact that we have to fork up that much money for ourselves, and then they get the premium care health insurance out there, is not acceptable. And that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Good evening. My name is Jim Zalinski. I live at 1662 Lake Shore Drive. I'm a town residence, resident, but I'm approaching you tonight because I think we share something in common that is, we've realized in the past week, and that was when the state put a delay to the construction of the 441 Bridge. This project has major financial implications to the City of Manassia, to our businesses, to all of our residents, and to delay this project for two more years is really an atrocious situation and a burden to everyone. I'm sure that Chief Steika can agree that this bridge in its current state is, is, is a traffic hazard. There's been many accidents. We're risking life and injury of individuals. By delaying this another two years, it continues to present some serious implications, both from a human standpoint and a financial standpoint for those people that wish to invest into the, into the area, wish to develop new projects into the area. It only opens up the door to those investors and developers to go to a different community if this thing is continually delayed. Now, I saw in the paper that the Aragami County Board President sent a letter to the state. I think it behooves you as representatives of the city, you carry a lot of power and a lot of clout, to unanimously send a letter to our state representatives and to the governor to immediately turn around this situation and get this project back on track. Therefore, I urge you to please work together as a unit, show your political clout, and petition the state to bring 441 to a bridge to an end within the two-year plan, instead of delaying it for another two more years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the report of department staff and consultants. We have Amy Barker here this evening, and she is going to update us on the fundraising for the Loop the Lake project. Amy?
Good evening.
A little further back.
Can you hear me okay? Come back. All right. How are we doing now?
My, I think better. Better in the back?
Well, I hope to be a positive highlight of your evening. We certainly have positive things to report in regards to fundraising for this project. Just as a reminder, we met back March 17th for a joint council meeting, and I just thought it would be, prove me to review the budget and what that looks like for our sources and use of funds to date. So the overall project budget for Loop the Little Lake is $3.2 million. 50% of that is coming from a DNR stewardship grant, that is $1.6 million. That, since we last met, we have secured. Very big deal, when that's 50% of the budget, so we're excited about that. 32% of the budget is what I'm reporting on tonight. That's the $1 million that we pledged in fundraising for this effort. And then that leaves 9% each for each municipality. So as one of your Alderman had pointed out that evening, this is a project that really comes at a 91% discount for you, so that's a pretty good deal. And I thought it was important to highlight what we've been doing since March. So we put together the brochures that you see. We started putting together our marketing material. One of those things that we thought was a good tool to use as we do our corporate requests is a video, but that captures the voice of the community. And we, I think it's important for you guys to hear too, how, how our friends and neighbors embrace this project and what their thoughts are on it. So I'm going to play this video for you. It's about three minutes, so short and sweet.
I grew up in the same house that my grandmother grew up in, and my mom still lives there today. And just this spring, she decided she wanted to pay revenge and have it been dedicated to her and her husband, having skill available to her. Pay revenge for confidence, pay revenge for security, as well as fun and freedom. It's just such a wonderful amenity for the community. Walking on it or on a bike, I personally have the chance to enjoy this trail, and I can't wait for it to be completed. It will provide a single way that I can go through it and enjoy it. I just feel that something like this really adds to the cultural and economic vitality of the area.
It's not just symbolic in terms of this bridge connecting the two cities. It brings a better quality of involvement, and again, of opportunities for people to get to know each other better. This will help tourism, this will help businesses in the downtowns of both Nina and Manassia. Huge impact on our store. It's our business, bicycles. We add more trails or pathways to downtown, people are more prone to use it. Getting more and more people out on the trail, enjoying the atmosphere, enjoying the community. Bringing more people downtown in general just helps everybody.
I think you will get a number of people that just will take a day out just to do an adventure, you know, just to go out and say, let's see what's on the trail.
It's very exciting just because we've been looking for more foot traffic down here, and just to loop it all the way around would just be overall really, really awesome.
We just love being able to keep ourselves healthy and active, and these kinds of trails are what really help thousands of people keep their own lifestyles active.
In the summer, in the evenings, when it's nice, we like to bike. I, I run on the trails as well sometimes, when, when the time permits. From an event perspective, the trestles would provide, you know, an organization with entire race loop that you could utilize for the course. By adding these couple new trestles, we'll really be able to feature the Nina-Manassia part of it, the trails in the Fox Cities.
The trail is something that one person can enjoy or an entire family can enjoy, and it really doesn't matter what community you live in.
I can go for a run with my daughter around the loop, and it's, that's a good workout. Or I can go with my, my wife, and we can go for a walk around the loop. I would say it's a great quality of life thing. It's, it's an easy decision for me to donate towards it.
It's amazing what you'll see out here, and the people, and everyone smiles when they're out here. They don't smile when they're in their car. You see, nobody smiles in their car, but out here, everybody smiles. You look at them, you talk to people differently, you look at people differently, you see everything differently out here. In here, it's just, it's, it's different, just completely different.
I think it's on a loop. The loop is on a loop. How funny. So to date, we had a press conference last week, and we made some major announcements. Over the summer, these little brochures that you have in your hands have been working hard for us out on the trails. You'll see those large signs where people are enjoying your farmer's market downtown, or enjoying their walk or bike ride on the trail, and that's their opportunity really to engage in this project, or, or send in their support. And I guess I was rather surprised at how well they've been working for us. People, for them to take it, imagine yourself on a walk. You take one of these, and what would happen to it afterwards? It could be in your car for a little while, it might make it home, but for it to also make it back with the donation really says that they care deeply about this project. So every time I open one of these and I, I see the tear off, and this is a lot how your Manassia residents have been engaging with donating to this project to date, I'm so excited to see that they're feeling very connected to this too. But $20 gets us there. $200,000 is certainly even more encouraging, and Community First Credit Union pledged $200,000 and encouraged a $200,000 match from the business community as well last week. $150,000 is coming from the Frank C. Shattuck Family Fund, that's held at the Community Foundation. $100,000 was pledged from the Tourism Development Grant from the Fox Cities Visitor and Convention Bureau. $25,000 was pledged to date from the Fox Cities Marathon. $20,000 has been pledged from Fox Cities Greenways, and they're also encouraging a $20,000 match among their membership. And if you've seen in the paper, we also received a $10,000 individual donation. Very unsuspecting guy wandered into our office, actually saw toilet paper on our wish list, and brought in toilet paper and said, "Oh, by the way, I actually feel very connected to this project. I'm not supposed to have $10,000," was his words, "but I've been, I have a wife who's a frugal saver, and I would like to contribute to this project. I also would like to encourage other individuals in these communities to match my donation, and I'm giving them until Thanksgiving to do so." So we're on the clock for his $10,000 match, and we're very excited for his generosity and for his ability to encourage others to do the same. So essentially, you double your money anytime you donate at this point, until Thanksgiving, and probably after that as well. So we have 505,000 in major gifts pledged to date. That's half our goal, and I'm really just getting started. I just started my corporate tour, I would call it. I have appointments coming up over the next few months with our major corporations, and I'm very confident that they will contribute as well. These are investors who have supported this project all along, and, and invested in other portions of this loop, and it's, it's rare for us to see a, a good, strong finish. We, we get a lot of phase one of projects and a lot of good starts, and what I think is really key about this project is you're done. You're completing a project. You have a purposeful loop, and they can pull into our downtowns. I just want to acknowledge a comment about Nina downtown versus Manassia downtown. This is, this is a trail amenity with 350,000 users every year on average, and it's probably grown much more since then, that are here. They're a captive audience. They want to be a part of your community. What's key for us in both downtowns is to not abandon them. They're, they're having a trail experience. They're having, they're enjoying nature at its finest, they're along the waterfront, and they might see some version of downtown in Nina, and they might see a residential neighborhood when they come into Manassia, but it's our job to tell them where to go next, and not abandon them in that experience, and really navigate them. And that was the overall purpose of Navigate Nina-Manassia. It's to be fundraising long-term, to communicate with visitors on how you get from point A to B, to tell the story of our communities, and why it's important that they're there, and how they can engage with it, and educate themselves on what used to be here, and what is here now, and what's to come, and all the great business opportunities and other amenities that they have to enjoy here. So this is a long-term fundraising effort on our behalf, but the short term is Loop the Little Lake, and getting to our goal of raising $1 million. And I'm just so happy to report that we are over halfway there in a very short period of time. You know, we're looking at a build for 2017, and it's 2015 yet, so I'm feeling pretty good about where we're at. I'm, I'm confident that we'll get there. I think it's really important for me to clarify our role, because I'm representing Navigate Nina-Manassia, but you may know me as Amy Barker, Executive Director of Future Nina. And I put myself in your shoes and wondered, what are these people thinking? Are they scratching their heads, like, why is Future Nina fundraising for Manassia? That's a valid question. Why am I fundraising for Manassia? And it really comes down to the importance of this project. I feel very passionately about this project. I think we have important opportunities as two communities to connect to each other and to encourage our business districts to thrive. And I care, care very deeply about that. So deeply that you're not the only ones asking that question, like, why would you be doing this? I have board members that are asking me the same question, because this is of no financial benefit to Future Nina. We are out there fundraising and asking on behalf of this project, and every time I go to someone or a company and ask on behalf of this project, I put our fundraising ask as a nonprofit organization at risk, because they're not going to give to the same person twice. So they have to make some choices on what's more important, and this is a very exciting project. So I've already seen a little bit of detriment to Future Nina's budget for supporting all the other great things that we do, but in the short term, I think that's a small price to pay for a long-range, beautiful project that has a huge economic impact on our area.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Barker this evening? Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for being here, Amy. Question I have for you is the fundraising. And as it stands now, each city is obligated for $300,000 for this trail, for the completion of the trail. And talking with Director Tungate, that next year, 2016, the way it looks like we're going to budget will be putting in a budget $150,000 2016 and $150,000 2017. So my question for you is the fundraising. If you keep getting money, and it keeps getting funded, and are we gonna, does that, will that lower, say, any of the tax burden of Nina-Manassia's budget for, off of $300,000?
One of the important roles we've played as an organization is bringing together private sector-public partnership. And in order to have that partnership, you have to have some skin in the game too. So I think it's important to plan for a contribution of some form. I also have to make it to the million-dollar market. While we're doing very good, we have to make sure that we get there, and sometimes that second half of fundraising becomes the most challenging. I think it's really important for individuals to feel connected to this project and feel a sense of ownership by donating to it too. And I'm working really hard with that grassroots effort, which is a much longer, longer game plan. To raise money in $20 increments is more challenging than $200,000 increments, but it's important value invested. And when your neighbors and your friends and the people who are supporting you are investing in that project, I think it's important to say, we're working together on this one. So I would love to be very hopeful and, and say, we're gonna over-fund raise like crazy on this one, and maybe we can help you out there. That's certainly a discussion for the future. But we have to keep in mind too, that sometimes these donations come in as specified funds. And sometimes donors have their own ideas about things that they would like to see. What we didn't include in that budget were things like benches, or really cool amenities to make it uniquely Manassia, or uniquely Nina, and to create a trail experience. So with over-fundraising, we'd have the potential for those added amenities as well. So we'll have to have some discussions about balancing out, you know, I, I'm very empathetic to, we have a real budget to manage here, and we have to, we have to be very frugal with our funds and do things that make sense moving forward. I have to do that on behalf of our organization too. So I completely understand. We're a small nonprofit with a small, small budget and trying to do a lot of things. So certainly something that we can revisit. I hope that would be a great problem to have.
All right. Thank you, and thank you for all your effort for, that you're putting into this.
Well, it looks like you did a fantastic job. Oh, one more question. Sorry. Alderman Taylor?
Hi, Amy. Thanks for being here. I bet some constituents asked me if the City of Manassia gave up Doughty Island, because your big signs out there throughout the communities has, has Nina in the whole Doughty Island. It just shows Manassia on the trestle side. And if you look at the signs out there, that's, that's how it appears to the public.
Are you talking about the map in the?
Yeah, your big signs. At this point, it takes up the whole Doughty Island that says Nina on your signs. If you look at your big signs out there in the public, and I went and checked them out...
So it's where they let Nina rest? Do we need to move Nina? Is that the question?
Well, it looks like, just take, just take a look at them, and you'll see, look at it, it looks like the whole Doughty Island is Nina.
Okay. Okay.
So it was brought to my attention a couple times, so I went and checked it out.
I think what we really tried to do with that, that broad-based map, and you saw it on the video, is identify key points near where we're building these trestles. So Plexus is on there, the YMCA is on there, because we looked at the potential to create a safe route to the YMCA, safer than going down your, on your bike down Commercial Street. I certainly would prefer that for my children. And, and so we kind of just, as a graphic designer, they probably plunked, here's Manassia, here's Nina, and, you know, here's YMCA and Plexus.
Oh, switched it up. I don't think Nina would like it either. You know, take a look at it and see how it looks. It doesn't look right. Thank you.
Well, Amy, it looks like you did a fantastic job with the, with the presentation tonight. Not many questions. We all know where to find you if we do need more questions, though. Thank you so mu-
You all know where to find me for those donations, too.
Yeah. Thank you so much for coming this evening. We're done with that. The next item on the agenda, we have the introduction of our new deputy fire chief, Victor Voss.
First, I'd like to thank the entire Manassia, Manassia, the City of Manassia Council for the opportunity to introduce Victor, Vic Voss. Vic has been chosen to be the new deputy chief of operations at Nina-Manassia Fire Rescue, thus filling a position vacated by retired deputy chief Steve Delau. Vic has been married to his lovely wife, Randy, for 22 years, and he has two sons, Riley, Riley, a senior, and Max, a fourth grader. The Voss family is heavily involved in hockey and spend a great deal of time together enjoying the sport. They also enjoy camping as a family activity during the summer months. Vic graduated from Amherst High School and obtained an associate degree in fire science from the Fox Valley Technical College in 1989. Vic continued his future as, his future further education at the National Fire Academy and was accepted into the executive fire officers program, and has, was accepted in 2008. This four-year program is intensified, is an intensified program where a person attends class for two full weeks a year in specific areas that improve fire officer's abilities. This program is recognized by the fire service as an extremely prestigious program, and the executive fire officer certification is sought after by chiefs, chief officers throughout the country. And Vic completed this program in 2011. Vic's career as a firefighter began June 25th, 1990, with the Nina Fire Department, and included promotions to driver on June 18th in 2011, and then to fire officer as a member of Nina-Manassia Fire Rescue on April 27th of 2005. Vic has played an integral role in, as a member of both the Nina Fire Department and Nina-Manassia Fire Rescue. When the Manassia-Nina Fire Departments merged, Vic managed the integration of the records database from both departments and made modifications so that one application would be utilized at Nina-Manassia Fire Rescue. He managed the mobile data computer systems, MDCs, from the planning stage to the installation and implementation at NMFR. He is a firehouse software administrator and handles all aspects of our records management. Former chief Len Vanderweis recognized Vic's abilities and appointed him to the FoxCom User Technical Committee and the FoxCom Radio Steering Committee. The technical committee provided guidance to the fiscal advisory board at Winnebago County on the use of the CAD hardware and software and the MDCs. The original radio steering committee was assigned to establish and oversee, was, was assigned and established to oversee establishment, the monitoring of a $43 million radio systems project mandated by the federal government. Winnebago County, Winnebago, Aragami, and Calumet Counties originally participated, but was later evolved into Winnebago County on its own, which budgeted $16 million for the radio project for Winnebago County. These, among all, among several other areas, where Vic brings a vast amount of knowledge and ability for the role of deputy chief of fire operations at Nina-Manassia Fire Rescue. Please join me in welcoming deputy chief Victor Voss to the management team at Nina-Manassia Fire Rescue.
My speech will be a lot shorter, because I waited in the hallway for an hour or My speech will be a lot shorter, because I waited in the hallway for an hour, so I kept trimming it back. But I thank everybody. I thank Chief Ochscher for his support and encouragement over, through this entire process. And I really look forward to getting to meet all of you. I've met some of the staff in both Nina and Minasha. It's kind of a new area for me, the political side of things, but I look forward to continuing to serve both communities as your new deputy chief. So, thank you.
Congratulations, Victor.
Thanks, Mayor.
The next person I'd like to introduce to you is the newest member of Nina Minasha Fire Rescue. It is my privilege to present you Evan Forster. Evan is joined here tonight by his wife, Amanda, a schoolteacher for the Appleton School District, and Amanda's parents, Steve and Kathy Sanger. Amanda and Evan have been married for approximately two years, and just this last summer moved into a new home. Yet probably the most significant event that's going to happen is they are expecting their first child in March. Evan will be filling the vacancy left by retired driver Dennis Matusek. Evan was born and raised in Eau Claire and moved to the valley to attend University of Wisconsin Oshkosh, where he obtained a bachelor's, bachelor's of science degree in psychology. Should come in pretty handy at the fire station, if I may add. He has two uncles that are firefighters. He saw the love they had for their jobs and decided to make a change and pursue firefighting as a career. Evan attended Fox Valley Technical College and earned an associate's degree in fire, in the fire protection program. His work experience includes time at the Grand Shoot Fire Department as a firefighter EMT and the Alagamee County Airport as a firefighter. Nina Minasha Fire Rescue was fortunate to have Evan serve an internship with us, and it is through that experience that the crews he was working, who is assigned to, became very comfortable with his abilities. He completed the Fox Valley Technical College hiring process, NMFR's assessment, along with interviews by Nina Minasha Fire Rescue's internal hiring committee and our joint fire commission. Although he was nervous at times, it was very apparent that he would be getting, we would be getting an extremely knowledgeable and skilled firefighter that will fill, that will enhance the service that Nina Minasha Fire Rescue provides to the communities of Nina Minasha. His official start date was Wednesday, September 14. He will complete almost four weeks of recruit school under the direction of Assistant Chief Sippen and with the help of Assistant Chief Green on October 16. Evan will be assigned to the Green shift, beginning working his 24-hour shift days on October 19. At this time, I'd like the city clerk to come forward, and we'll do a swearing-in. The swearing-in for Evan.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Evan Forster.
I, Evan Forster.
Do Salomon swear?
Do Salomon swear.
To do my duty as a firefighter...
To do my duty as a firefighter.
For the cities of Nina and Minasha...
For the cities of Nina and Minasha.
Winnebago and Calumet Counties...
Winnebago and Calumet Counties.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
To serve my commanding officers...
To serve my commanding officers.
With respect and dignity...
With respect and dignity.
To serve the cities, the citizens of the cities of Nina and Minasha...
Serve the citizens of both Nina and Minasha.
With compassion, courage, and integrity...
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
And to uphold the laws and constitutions...
And uphold the laws and constitutions.
Of the United States of America...
Of the United States of America.
The state of Wisconsin...
State of Wisconsin.
And the cities of Nina and Minasha, to the best of my ability...
And the cities of Nina and Minasha, to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
One more thing that I'd like to do is call Evan's wife, Amanda. She will pin Evan with his first badge. We didn't, we didn't really practice this real long, so hopefully it goes well. Finally, I guess, please join me in welcoming Evan as the newest member to a dedicated group of men and women at Nina Minasha Fire Rescue. Thank you very much.
We promise, we promise not to make you attend another one of these meetings for a long time, unless it's punishment. You don't get off so easy, Victor. Well, move on to item four. We better start speeding it up a little, or we're not gonna get out of here till 2:00 AM. The fourth item is the minutes and communications to receive. Do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to receive minutes A through G and communications H and I.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions on those items? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item G is the consent agenda. There are four items this evening. The minutes to approve from the common council meeting of September 21st, the Board of Public Works recommendations from September 21st, including the development agreement between the city of Minasha and Van's Realty and Construction of Appleton, with a two-year deferral on special assessments rather than a five-year deferral as per the municipal code, and that the developer pays for the backbone sewer and water system and stormwater management facilities, and the recommendation of the Board of Public Works to modify lane assignments on the Washington Street north of Nicolay Boulevard, and Nina Minasha Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendations from September 22nd, authorizing Nina Minasha Fire Rescue to fill vacated firefighter positions after December 1st. Does anyone wish to have any of the items separated at this time? Alderman Taylor?
I don't.
Alderman Nichols?
Number two, please.
Any other items? Do we have a motion for the remaining three items? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for item one, three, and four.
Is there a second to approve? There's a motion to approve items one, three, and four. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
At this time, do we have a motion for the approval of item number two, the development agreement? Alderman Nichols?
Mr. Mayor, if it's all right with you and the rest of the council, I would like to ask Director Kyle if he had a chance to speak with Mr. Hayne regarding this agreement, because typically that we've followed that process in the past before approving something.
Director Kyle?
Yes, I did speak with Jerry Hayne, and of course, he was quite disappointed with the outcome of our last meeting with sort of his request being substantially modified. He's unsure as to, you know, the timetable for proceeding with this project. There's, there's some implications that perhaps you're not aware of. By not proceeding with this project, the city of Minasha acquired about five acres from Mr. Hayne for the purpose of creating Woodlands Park. There is no street access to that facility at this time. I believe Brian is budgeting some substantive funds for playground equipment and other improvements in the park for next year. And unless this development moves forward, we will not have street access to the park. There is, and he was requested this, to provide an access easement, which the city now has the benefit of. But again, this is far cry from having a public street to that facility. I think, you know, there was concern about a couple of specific items in the request that was made by Van's, one of them being the request to not be obliged to pay for certain infrastructure improvements that are outside the development, namely being the backbone sewer and water system and the regional stormwater pond. And that is something that is outside of the realm of what we would typically approve in a development agreement that may be related to our special assessment program. That's one element, but then there's the whole other element of modifying our current deferred assessment policy that is enumerated in ordinance that does allow the deferral of those assessments for infrastructure for a five-year period. And we've routinely granted that to virtually all of our developers on the east side. Just a few weeks ago, you approved utilizing that deferred assessment program with Mike Hagens in the development agreement that we signed with him. And I believe that going to a two-year deferral is a substantial departure from the policies that we've used in the past, which I feel have been very successful in attracting new growth and investment in our community and has enabled, you know, subdivisions to develop in the city of Minasha that perhaps would not have developed here. And so I really strongly feel that we should, at a minimum, go back to what we've approved over and over again for other developers, and that is the utilization of our deferred assessment policy as currently prescribed by ordinance.
Thank you, Director Kyle.
Having heard that, I would like to make a motion to approve the development agreement between the city of Minasha and Van's Realty and Construction of Appleton Incorporated with a five-year deferral as part of the municipal code, and the developer pays for the backbone sewer and water and stormwater management facilities.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second? Do you have more discussion, Alderman Nichols?
I just wanted to add that I'm, I'm making that motion for two reasons, after have given, have given considerable thought to our discussion last week and how it seems important for the council to recoup some of those, recoup the cost of the backbone for the water and stormwater management facilities. So that seems important to the council. The deferred assessment program is set in code, so I feel it's important that we follow code unless we have, unless we've changed it for some reason, and also because the developer has already agreed to five lot sales per year to cover, which would cover the costs or, I'm sorry, which would cover our debt payments during that five-year deferral. I thought that this would be a fair motion to bring to the table.
Alderman Langton?
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, six years ago, my first year on the park and rec board, we talked about the east side Park Diamond back then. So is it, is this saying that the reason why it's still not there is because the access of that road, which wasn't talked about back then? I know we talked about the access of the road, but it wasn't talked about because of Van's Realty. It was just about, we had to get a road in there to get that park in there.
Well, I think Greg's point is valid, that road access alongside the park is just, makes it better for the...
But is that the way it was six years ago?
Well, I think six...
Is that what we were looking at six years ago? Is what we're tonight because of Van's Realty?
Yeah, we wanted, we wanted about Van's Realty, but we definitely wanted a road alongside the park.
Right, but is that the reason? Is this the reason why the road hasn't been put in yet?
Well, I think we're trying to work, work hand in hand.
And why the park, no, well, I want to answer, is that the reason why the road isn't put in yet and why the park isn't built yet?
No, no, it isn't. We're, as Greg alluded to, we went through a pretty extensive selection process for some playground equipment, and we're planning on putting it in early next year. So elements of the park are, either have been developed or more extensively will be developed next year with the play equipment.
Well, they haven't been developed at all, right?
Well, we've, we've cut in a, a trail from the south, which people are now utilizing. We did some, some grading of the, some of the open space there, so people can get out there and enjoy, you know, you know, some, some open space there, but it's certainly not, hasn't been developed a whole lot yet. So, but we do want to move ahead with that.
Okay, so it takes this many years to put a park in? Just out of curiosity...
Well, we face a lot of financial challenges and have a lot of things on our plate, and in a perfect world, would I have liked to seen it fully developed right now? Yes, I would have, but I'm trying to deal with some of the other realities of our department and the city's financial situation, so I'm, you know, we're, we're working as diligent as we can.
I mean, we've been, we've been putting money away for that every year, right?
Well, yeah.
Okay, I'm, that's...
Yeah, no, you know, that's a good point. The park was acquired in 2013, the land, so we really didn't really have a park until two years ago.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. How are we accessing this parcel now? Is it landlocked? I didn't hear about this.
They're, they're coming up from the south right now. There is a gravel pathway that we put in, I think, last year, so they are coming in that way, and we have permission, correct, to, to get in there from the, from the developer's estate to get into the park.
Well, this is something. This is the first time I'm hearing about it, that said, that we can't build a park until the street is, and we're already budgeting money and collecting money to put this park in, and now there's no access to it. And now we're, we're not arguing about it, but we're talking about a deferred assessment.
I, I heard Greg say that it would be improved access, that there's access to the park. You can get to the park today, but I, I think what he's saying is it would be much better for the public if the road was in there.
Well, where's the road now that the trail is going to the park? How far away is it?
Tanna Lane is the closest street end to the park, which is, it's a short, I don't know, 75-foot walk in the park.
This seems weird that we're holding up a park now, because I was, this is all about the special assessment, because I was, the reason this motion's out here, because I brought it up, this was a compromise to start winding down these special assessments. And now all of a sudden, we can't wind it down because we're, our park is in jeopardy because we cannot put a street in? I find this hard to believe. Nobody told us about this landlocked piece of parkland that only a trail leads to. And I hear from some people out on the east side, when is our park going in? I said, I, now, now I, now I don't really know. The whole this, we had a lot of discussion at the last meeting, and this never even came up. Now all of a sudden, this is the deciding factor to do the special assessment, to get this road in, so they have access to the park. I'm just surprised that this discussion didn't happen sooner, because we had, we discussed this for over probably 45 minutes on a special assessment. Is there any indication that we're ever gonna roll back the special assess, or this deferred
You can amend the ordinance by doing so, but there are consequences of doing that, and the consequences are, at least in my opinion, that it will have a negative impact on development within the city of Minasha. You're providing the developer an incentive today in order to get something that benefits us in the short-term future. We're getting, we're getting investment by the developer to make improvements to development land, which enables the creation of lots, which enables the creation of homes, which enables the creation of pack space. And this occurs, has occurred in a very effective way since the deferred assessment policy was adopted in 1993. And we, I think we've reaped strong benefits from doing this. Now, with that being said, if you look what's happening on the east side, we have very little development territory left, and that problem has been further exacerbated by the village of Harrison now taking huge segments of all what was to be our growth area and now making that part of the village. We've probably lost, I don't know, 100 acres of what would have been city development land by virtue of their annexations into our territory. So I think it's important that we get these subdivisions started, get these lots built, and continue forward with the policy that we've had in place for the last 22 years.
Well, that's not going to change anything, because this property is already in the city of Manasha.
That's correct.
How many lots does Lexington have yet to develop?
Well, the first phase, which is virtually completed, was 75 lots, so they have another if you want to-
And is there anything planned beyond that for this?
There are no other planned or pending subdivisions in the city of Manasha other than this one that's being proposed by Jerry Hain, and then he also owns a small tract, it's about seven acres by the water treatment. So those are the only two development parcels that are perhaps ripe for development in the city of Manasha at this time.
Anybody that's hearing this for the first time, Lexington, that's a TIF, correct? All of it?
It is.
That's even better than deferred assessment.
Correct, but we are seeing huge benefit from the result of doing that in the last, well, we have now about $12 million of increment associated with the development that has occurred since we established that TIF 11. And prior to that, we hadn't seen a single home built in Lake Parkville in six years. So yes, we've made an investment, but the investment is paying off.
There are other reasons behind that, I don't have to go into this all night. I have no problem with helping them with this, but this deferred assessment, yeah, the deferred assessment is troubling to me that we just keep it going and going and going.
But it's available to residents too, so would you advocate for taking the deferred assessment away from homeowners?
No, for development of property.
But it's the same thing, you're deferring, you're deferring their costs, which could be a cost avoided by the city.
What are the instances for a resident that buys a lot, what's deferred?
Well, we just approved subdivisions, South Hill West, those residents are taking advantage of the deferred assessment. If their assessments were over $2,500, the city wasn't paying, telling them that, well, you need to pay us $2,500 today for your curb and gutter and street construction, we're giving you a pass for five years at no interest. So you're offering the same deal to homeowners that you're offering to developers. And in addition, when, when a developer comes in, and let's say they develop, you know, 50 lots, something like that, every time a lot is sold, whatever is out there as a deferred assessment has to be paid on closing. So our cost for the sewer, the water, the street construction, the street lights, all of that come back to the city as soon as he sells that lot to a homeowner.
Yeah, 0% interest, but when we put in a street is a 0% interest when somebody's getting their street put in, but they elect not to pay it all upfront, they have options.
Well, if not for the deferred assessment policy, what options would they have?
Well, that's for the developers, not just for every individual too, is it?
Yes, yes. Every individual with an assessment over $2,500 has the ability to have that, so a ten-year deferral period, five years without interest, and then after that, they start paying interest plus 1%.
Okay, I just feel like we got to start winding this back, because we are winding it back, considering there was a TIF created to build houses, and how the deferred assessment's still out there.
Yeah, if there were no assessments, though, in the Lexington case, they put in all of the infrastructure.
Thank you.
Just got to turn the light on. See, Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Economic Times brings different levels of incentives. You watch television now, you don't see the car companies with all their perks, all their incentives out there, and I think every business, and I think the city also has to adjust that during downturn economies and when the economy's doing better. I hear that we're not treating people fairly, if we give this guy this, we didn't give this to him. Well, if we look back at this project and the projects before that, I heard that we didn't treat this Vans fairly, and this is not what I was informed with, and maybe it's wrong, but I was told that we froze him out on the TIF out there, and we were supposed to have him in on the, he wanted to be in on the TIF, so doesn't sound like we treated him fairly with the TIF out there.
The council chose amongst three proposals, I believe, and that was the decision that we as a body made at that point, that Cypress and Lexington were the two that we wanted to build with at that point.
And we didn't treat everybody the same as we're seeing now, and it's, it's different, the economy's different. And Alderman Zalinski thought it was a good idea here that we start rolling back a little bit on, on giving out these perks, if you will. The area is under development, the park is under development, it's all going to come, it's all part of it, it's not, nobody said the park has to be done tomorrow, and it's all part of that development out there. And it's on our, on our growth plan, it's on the park agenda, we've already budgeted money for it, so to me, that's not even a part of the equation here. All we're trying to do is help the city financially by reducing some of these incentives because the economy's better. That's all we're trying to do.
Is there further discussion?
Moved by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Keehan, to approve the development agreement between the city of Manasha and Vans Realty and Construction of Appleton, Inc., with a five-year deferral as per the municipal code, and the developer pays for the backbone sewer and water system and stormwater management facilities.
There's a motion, a second on the floor, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion secured on roll call 5-3.
Okay, moving on, action items. Item one is the accounts payable and payroll for September 22nd through October 1st. I was thinking November all of a sudden, we're getting ahead of ourselves. Do we have a motion for that, please? Oh, Alderman, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 9/215 to 10/115 in the amount of $1,63,520.45.
There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 8-0.
Item two is the beverage operators' license applications for 2015 through 17. Do we have a motion for those are recommended for approval at this point? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators' license applications for the 2015 through 2007 licensing period as listed under approved in the police department's memo dated September 30th, 2015.
There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please, I'm sorry?
Motion secured on roll call 8-0.
We do have one license recommended for denial, we do have, is it Blow, or Mr. Blow is here this evening? If there's no objections, I would invite him if he'd like to make a statement.
How you guys doing today? My name is Junior Blow, I live at 1021 LeSardine Drive. I'm not here to ask for any donations or anything like that, obviously. I'm just here to ask for opportunity. I moved here a year ago, I've been living here, I worked at Family Video, I worked on and off for friends, working on houses. I'm just trying to get, get my liquor license. I may, unfortunately, made some mistakes in the past to get a couple of things on my record, although I've been, stand out of trouble for like four years now, I have no felonies, and I'm just trying to get some opportunity. I have my son permanently, and I'm trying to work and be a productive citizen here in your city of Manasha. So I'm just trying to get some opportunity so I can be able to get my liquor license and to be able to have another job.
Turnkey, did you have any questions?
I was noticing on the form that you filled out, it says something like misdemeanor high school fight, is that, these convictions, were you in high school at the time?
No, no, that was my first offense when I was in high school. Well, I think I wasn't even an adult then, and that was what that was about, a high school fight.
So the ones, did you see the letter that Lieutenant Ron Bouchard put together?
Yes, yes, it should say something on there about the DVs and the disorderly conduct on there.
It does, and what I'm trying to figure out, or what I'm asking, is those occurred in 2011, did those, how old were you at that time?
I was 26 or 27.
Thank you.
So do you want to have any questions or wish to make a motion at this time? Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. It looks like between May and July was a very busy time for you. What, what's going on, what changed?
As far as-
Well, it looks like on May of 2011, bail jumping, domestic abuse, on July-
Oh, you're talking about as far as the cases go? Well, I have, I have my kid permanently now, so I have my son with me, and it's just, it's time to grow up, you know, that's the reason why I moved from where I was living at, it's the reason why I moved here, you know? And unfortunately, it was a late change, but in my opinion, change is never too late, and that's why I'm here, that's why I'm not living in the southern part of the state, that's why I moved away from there, and I'm just trying to get some opportunities so I'm able to have a job here in Manasha.
And where are you looking to work? Is this going to be a bar or?
No, not a bar, no, not a bar. I'm going to be maybe working at, I'm trying to get at Quickmark, or I'm trying to get at QuickTrip that they're building right now.
Are you employed at either one of those places right now?
No.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. So Chief, the attorney mentioned something, but it's not on that sheet, so on this sheet, this is the only three deals that he has. I don't see anything about a high school in here.
Anything that would have been from high school would be an juvenile thing, so no, that would not be included in your information.
Okay, that's, that's good, thank you. So then, you've been clean since, well, well, yeah, you had THC, a position in THC, so you've been clean for five years?
Almost five.
Almost five?
Yes, sir.
And your son is how old?
He's nine.
He's nine?
Yes.
Okay, and you have full custody of him, the courts gave full custody?
Well, I'm going through that right now, but he's living with me here, he goes to Giggan Elementary, and he's here with me permanently, so I'm going through the court stuff right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? Would anyone care to make a motion? I will. Alderman Langdon?
I'm going to make the motion to approve the license for- Junior Blow.
Is there a second at this time? The motion, a second? Mark, did you have anything else?
No.
Is there any further discussion? If not, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 6-2.
Tim, can you, can you help him on the way out? So, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you guys for your time, appreciate it.
I almost missed number three. I think he's been sitting back here for a long time, so. Item three is a Class A liquor license application for QuickTrip at 1499 Appleton Road. Do we have a motion? Not everyone at once, please. Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion for a Class A liquor license application for QuickTrip, Inc., 1499 Appleton Road, Manasha. Terry M., I'm sorry, Garduskas, is the agent for the 2015-16 licensing year.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second, okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 8-0.
Thank you for coming, can I? Item four is a Class A liquor license application for ShopCo Stores. Is there a motion at this time? Might as well keep going, Mark.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Make a motion for the Class A liquor license application for ShopCo, 1578 Appleton Road, Manasha, with Martha Banarowski as the agent for the 2015-16 licensing year.
There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 8-0.
I'm going to, going to skip item five until the chief comes back. We'll move on to item six, property assessment services for 2015 through 2018. Director Sino, did you have any comments before we move forward?
So we started the RFP process this past summer, and we did send it out to all five providers that we knew of that would provide this type of work for the city of Manasha, basically our size city. Unfortunately, I only received two responses. One of them was from Associated Appraisal Consultants, that's our current provider, and one was from Accurate Appraisal. As I mentioned in the memo, we did review the proposals in detail, completed in-person interviews with each firm, and completed a number of reference checks. After all of that work, I am recommending that the city maintain its relationship with Associated Appraisal. It is $11,325,000 higher than Accurate's proposal for the next three-year period. I do have some ethical issues with Accurate's proposal, more the firm, the partners in charge of the assessments. I did confirm with the Department of Revenue that one of the partners of Accurate Appraisal will be suspended by the Department of Revenue from assessing from November 1st of 2015 through April of 2016. What happened was the Department of Revenue found misconduct with their work from 2012, warned the company in 2013 to correct their practices, told them that they were going to be reviewing their work in 2014, and found the same issue in 2014 when they did that. That's the biggest concern I have with Accurate. The second one, Accurate Appraisal is not able right now to license Market Drive software with assessment technologies, the owner of that software, that would put the city in a bind as far as our Market Drive. We could let Accurate use it, but it would be under our licenses, they couldn't use it for field operations, or at their offices, or for any modeling, or we could use their software, but if we use their software, we wouldn't have access to that information in our offices, no reporting capabilities, et cetera. And then the third one is the timing of the process. We- et cetera. And then the third one is the timing of the process. We had some issues with Associated last year. They were working with us on the resolution, but what we did that was more important is we changed the process so that those timing issues didn't happen any longer. And Accurate cannot commit to the process, the timing of the process that we're looking for. So based on those three issues, I would recommend that the city maintain Associated Appraisal.
Alderman Langdon?
Okay. Thank you, Peggy. I will make the motion then to... The Property Assessment Services, I'd like to motion to, make the motion for Associate Appraisal Consultants, SSC, as the city's assessor for the period of October 1st, 2015 to July 31st, 2018.
So motion a second. Is there any discussion? Kevin?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Peggy, we had some experiences that weren't so good and we had talked about evaluating contracts for our appraisers. And could you talk about, a little bit about the performance measures that were put in with this contract?
Sure. So even before the new contract, this new contract, under the old contract, what the mayor and I sat down with Associated Appraisal after the entire incident happened last year and we realigned the process so that no estimated reports would be submitted to the Department of Revenue on our behalf. It wouldn't happen until the actual reports were ready. And the actual reports would be there in the timeframes that the Department of Revenue needs them to get them into the equalized value for the current year. I'm happy to report that this year, the process went very well. Our Board of Review met and they didn't have to adjourn and come back and meet later. We had all of our open book and notices out and we were able to file all those reports on time. In addition to that, as I was interviewing the two firms, I did talk to each of them about a performance clause in the contract. I can't tell you that we've actually come up with something solid. You know, both of the proposers did say, well, you always have a termination for non-performance. And as much as I recognize that, on April 30th, that's really not a choice that we have. We need, we need someone there to do the work and we need them to defend the values that they've created. We did talk about a written notification process. One of the proposers said, you know, I see myself as a department head of the city and if somebody makes a mistake, do you fire them or do you withhold their pay? That kind of hit home. I get that. But then the question becomes, what is it that we can do as far as performance? Right now, written notifications is where I'm at. We are going to be using the state's contract. I, as I was doing the reference checks, I also checked with a number of different communities and nobody really had a performance clause per se, i.e. if you don't do X, we will not pay you. At least the consensus of the people I've been talking to didn't, they weren't sure if that was appropriate or not. So I guess I'm right now at a notification process if indeed there's an issue.
I guess I'm gonna ask our attorney if there's anything that we have that we can use because it's not about punishing so much as creating steerage to make sure that they're performing and that we don't put our citizens and taxpayers in jeopardy again like we have a couple other times in the past. And I was wondering if there's anything we have at our disposal either to be proactive about or, you know, I don't, I agree with, just terminating a contract isn't the solution because it doesn't fix the problem. I was wondering if there's anything that we can do as a city to help ensure that we create the proper steerage.
We could put in some kind of a clause whereby after having received notice, if it's not corrected, that there's some kind of a monetary penalty, I suppose, per day, per week, or, I mean, we use it in other contracts, like public works contracts.
Well, that's what I was thinking. You know, they're not an employee. As an employee, you have rules and places where you can discipline. When it's a contractor, you have a contractor that has a contractual obligation to perform. And if they don't perform, just like in construction or anything else, there are ramifications to not meeting performance deadlines, so to speak. And that was something that I felt very strongly about when this happened almost a year ago. And I thought we were gonna have in this contract at this point that something was going to be done. And apparently, we're not in any better shape than what we were previously. That's what I'm hearing, that there's no change in the contract as far as performance requirements.
I think, I think it's not that there's no change. There are all of the deadlines set forth. I think what you're looking for is for some kind of damages. And that's, that's where we're struggling. We do have the performance in place and each of the firms that I talked to said, yes, anything to do with the statutory assessment duties, of course, we'll have a performance is fine. But the question then becomes, is it monetary damages that we're looking for? And if so, what would that be? If we've paid them for nine months and in month 10, they didn't file something timely, let's say, do we never pay them again? Do we not pay them that month? You know, that's the struggle that we're having right now is how would we tie that monetary damages to, you know, in a public works contract, it's a little more straightforward. You have to have it done by X date. If you don't get it done, there's a penalty of whatever per day. The assessment process doesn't really work that way.
I guess I understand the challenges of it, but I thought we had enough time to come to something. Does, is that anything where if they reported a regulation of licensing or anything, that they would have some accountability with them because they haven't performed to meet those deadlines?
I'm gonna maybe defer to the attorney only because what happened was a timing issue. It wasn't something that they would be penalized by the Department of Revenue for or, you know, had their license affected. It was, it was a process that happens often in a lot of communities, especially when the board has to be kept open, maybe for like manufacturing assessment or something like that. But the problem was, is the estimate was very low. Again, I'll be happy to go back to the company. I just, I didn't, we have been thinking about it this entire time. I've been talking to other communities as far as what they might be using. I talked to the Department of Revenue. I've also talked to the proposing firms. I haven't come up with anything that's been meaningful. So I guess that's on me. I knew that was an issue and I have been talking about it, but I don't have a solution for you.
Yeah. Part of the problem with outsourcing is that you don't have people that actually are accountable to the city themselves. And that's the problem with outsourcing, any department within government is now the people have, the people responsible have accountability only to their, their business owner and not to the city. And we still really don't have anything built in to make them accountable to the city. And I guess we have to live with it and continue to work on it. And if there's a problem, well, maybe we need to go back to having our own assessor. And that makes, that would just make it easy. And in fact, if this comes up again and I still, I'm still in this chair, that'd probably be my recommendation. So, thank you for all your records.
Alderman Keehan?
Thank you. Peggy, aside from the rather significant issue that we had with them last year, have we had any other issues at all with Associated?
I would say as far as the assessing, as far as their statutory assessing duties, I would say no. There have been some things that we've asked them for that you may call ancillary duties, some things that our community development department would like them to get done faster. Maybe they don't need them done as fast for assessment purposes, but it would be really helpful for us. Again, back to Alderman Benner's comment of when you have an in-house assessor, you can make all those things work a little bit. So I would say there's been some of those issues. I am happy to report, though, those were some questions we asked in the interview process as well. And Associated is willing to work with us. I did have Kevin Engelbert, our planner, in on the interviews as well. And they did a lot of talking about linking to our GIS system and the timing of how fast things, we put right in the RFP, how fast we wanted things done. And they are willing to work on those things with us. So I would say no, not as far as the assessing duties to my knowledge.
And then the one issue that we did have, because they've changed the process, that will not happen again.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna, Peggy, I'm gonna Peggy back off of Alderman Benner. Because, is it because they're outsourced that they can't even be, I mean, we're not talking, okay, say necessarily money or fire them, but can't they be reprimanded? How did you find... How did you find the other one that you said, no, you found out Accurate, the stuff that they were? How'd you find that information out? And if this happens again, say from Associate, I mean, wouldn't we want that in their records for other communities to know?
Okay. The way I found out about what was going on with the Department of Revenue with Accurate Appraisal is it's been in the news. So I, it started with the news media release and then I called the Department of Revenue to confirm. But there is a difference between what happened in that scenario and what happened with Associated. What Associated did last year was they made a bad mistake. If you ask me, I would call it poor judgment on an estimate. Mark Brown was actually here until about 8:15. He did have to leave, or 8 o'clock, he did have to leave. But I know he was willing to talk to it. It was an estimate that was very low. I'm not gonna tell you that an error like that can't happen again because it was an estimated report that happened low and by the time they got the final and it was in place. But 70-57 errors through the Department of Revenue do happen quite frequently. This happened to be in a portion of our community that was in a county on its own and it was a small portion, therefore the problem was magnified. So I can't tell you there's never gonna be another problem. But what they did was not illegal, unethical, immoral, any of those kind of things. It was just a bad mistake.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I think that when Peggy and I have talked with Mark, we've given the expectation that we do not want to use estimates in the future and that will solve this problem, that we expect to have final numbers when they're reported, not estimates. And that's what caused the problem that we had the last time around. So... Is there any other discussion? If not, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Moshe Kier on roll call 8-0.
I skipped item number five because the chief was out in hallway for a moment. So we do have the alcohol traffic enforcement grant. Did you want to make any comments, Chief? Go ahead.
Based upon everything tonight, the two-second version is this is basically the same type of grant that we've received in the past, which allows us to perform additional traffic enforcement outside of our regular patrol duties.
Here we go. Short and sweet. Is there a motion? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion for the alcohol traffic enforcement grant for $20,000 for the year 2015 to 2016, for the approval to accept and spend the award grant funds. The grant will cover dedicated enforcement from October 2015 until to September 2016.
There's a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? We're gonna have to sit and look at each other for a minute till Mike returns. Ah, I have a feeling the attorney isn't gonna let you push his button. So we have a motion and a second on the floor for the alcohol, to approve the alcohol traffic enforcement grant at this point. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Moshe Kier on roll call 8-0.
Item seven is in agreement with Kenseki Design for the main mill and walkway design services. Did you want to comment, Director Kyle?
Yes. This ties back into our office tower and parking ramp project. As part of that, the city has some obligations to connect, make that walkway connection between the ramp and Main Street and also some reconstruction associated with sidewalks on the east side of Mill Street. And what were, what was requested of the, as part of a request for proposals, was to evaluate that territory essentially extending from the terminus of Mill Street. If you're not familiar with that right now, it's a kind of a compilation of wood chips and a few flagpoles. So we've looked, we've asked them to kind of consider how that space would ultimately perhaps connect with the Riverwalk and then extend that on north along the Mill Street corridor, evaluate what kind of crossing that we would have at Mill and Main Street to get from the south side of Main to the north side of Main and then back to our walkway that exists between Main Street and the Broad Street Alley and eventually the parking ramp. So we've, we had a group of some city staff and we had committee members participate in that. We, I think, requested from eight different firms. We received four proposals back. We evaluated them and our team chose Kenseki Design. There is one comment that Attorney Captain called my attention and that relates to the standard terms and conditions. And if we were to adopt this agreement, we would be using the city's standard terms and conditions, not the consultant's.
Anything else, Greg? Okay. I'll make the motion for the agreement with Kenseka Design Inc. for main mill street and walkway design services.
So motion a second. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. Greg, how much is this gonna cost?
Thirty-four thousand, six hundred something.
All right. Is this how it works usually? I mean, okay, the developers said they don't care how the walkway looks from the parking lot to Main Street, from Broad Street to parking lot. They're letting, they, they said, Mr. Hogarty said he's gonna let the city decide how they want to do that. And, and so, isn't this something that we can't decide ourselves and do?
No. And believe me, they do care how the walkway looks.
He said it, no. He said no. His words.
Well...
I'm just saying. He said no. The question was asked, Mr. Hogarty, and you said no.
I'm not sure what specific question you were asking.
I asked it. I asked it.
What was the question?
I said, so, it's okay for, you know, if the city makes, you know, decides what's done. And he says, I, we don't care. Just so it looks decent for our people to walk through.
That's...
So, no, that's what I said, Greg. I'm just saying.
That probably wouldn't be the way that either Greg nor I would characterize what he's told us. And maybe it was different when he told you.
Right at council meeting, when, May 18th.
But when he's spoken to us, they had some very specific...
Well, I'm just saying and I'm just saying.
I'm not disagreeing with you, Mark, that he may have told you that, but when he spoke to us...
At council, May 18th. So anyway, okay. So is that how it's normally done then? So this is something that we can't do on our own?
This is something that we can't do effectively on our own? I mean, this, this design is an integral component of our downtown. You know, we have a lot of elements here. We have a marina. We have the city square. We have the Riverwalk. And as we proceed with, you know, this major project in our downtown, we want to have some design expertise that allows us to have an integrated... we want to have some design expertise that allows us to have an integrated look and feel to what, how this walkway is going to look and function, and become a positive asset for our downtown. And also, we've got to think about, okay, the linkages that are occurring associated with this development. We have a bunch of new people here, we're having a new bridge constructed in five years. That bridge is going to have, as I understand it, likely there will be an underpass that will connect to our green space on the east side of the bridge. And there are elements of design that need to be taken into consideration as part of this project, so we end up with something that we're happy with for the long-term future.
Okay. Landmarks Commission mentioned that they would like to be part of this, is that okay?
Yes, yes. Tom Grady is, was on the review committee, as was Paul Burnett, and Tom will be participating as we have, we're gonna have a little steering group that's going to be giving advice to the consultant as we approach this, as well as Mr. Radke and the mayor. And then, we will bring back some concepts early on to the council. So, you know, this is, I think, kind of a typical urban design sort of challenge here, is how do we build a space that we're all gonna be happy with?
Okay, thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm thrilled to see that this project will include more than just the pedestrian walkway and extend, and that it will extend all the way down Mill Street and to the river, so that we can have a continuous track down to the river, and make that area more aesthetically pleasing as well. I also took some time to look into what kind of work this guy does with his company, and I was really impressed, and I'm excited for what they might come up with. So, I wholeheartedly support this endeavor.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Langdon asked the cost of this, and I think for the, for the consultant, it's thirty something.
Thirty-four thousand, six hundred something.
And that's for the consultant fee. The final scope of construction, of this construction project will be determined during the project process, and based on the current construction budget of $200,000. Is that, and that $200,000, is that the thirty-sub-thousand included, and then the $200,000?
The, the, what was part of the development agreement, or the city's obligations, I think it was $365,000 or $375,000 to do all of these things, the walkway and so forth. $150,000 had to do with the essential improvements to the sidewalk and the walkway. The other 50 is a number that sort of I came up with that would be associated with the end of Mill Street. And then, so, they're designing to this budget, when we would actually build, you know, say the end of Mill Street, I think we would be looking at this as a phase-type of thing, as resources are available. We know, what we do know is we need to get the walkway connection built and ready to go by May of next year.
And nowhere in these documents do I see where it says Landmarks Commission has, has any input in this. What I see is, in task seven, there'll be a final review from the steering committee, there'll be a steering committee appointed. And I don't wanna have us mislead Alderman Langdon by saying the Landmarks has something to do with this project. I was viciously attacked by them when I voted for the hotel removal. And because I voted for it, as a Landmarks member, as a preservationist to keep it during that time, but as an Alderman, I had to vote sometimes different than being on a citizens' committee. So, there's some different hats that we have to wear. And I thought I heard you say that the Landmarks has some input or jurisdiction or something over this, and I just wanna be clear that I don't see that in these documents.
The Landmarks Commission does not have any designated authority over improvements in the public way, but we do and have had participation of two Landmarks Commission members in the preparation of the request for proposals for this project. They were on the review team that selected the consultant, and they will be part of the steering committee that guides this planning process.
Okay, but it doesn't go back to Landmarks or anything like that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Zalinski?
Greg, is, they're doing the design, are they helping with the engineering also?
We will have plans and specs associated for the construction of this project at the end of this.
So, that's good, that's part of the total cost, engineering, and, Mark, you have any idea what that's worth? That's gonna help offset some of our staff time doing engineering, and maybe it'll be a little bit more elaborate than 10 or 12 percent. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion? Do you have a comment?
I just want to ensure that the city's standard terms and conditions are part of the agreement and not the standard terms and conditions that the consultant is providing.
Mark, was that part of your motion? To approve the contract, including the city's standard terms and conditions?
Yes.
Okay, so that was the motion that was on the floor, then? Is, if there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Moshe Kierd on roll call 8-0.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions, and if there's no objection from the council, I'm going to ask that we move down to items eight and nine first. We have some people from both of those items here this evening, I'm not sure if there's others, but the item eight is Resolution 33 approving a 2015 budget adjustment for the initial Loop the Little Lake project expense. Do we have a motion for that item at this time? Yep. Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the resolution for R-33-15, resolution approving the 2015 budget adjustment of $65,075 for the initial Loop the Lake project expense introduced by Alderman Langdon.
Is there a second?
And then...
Motion and a second, do you have discussion, Mark?
Yes, I do. Brian, could you please, we went over it last week, could you go over that for the council and the people out in the public and on TV, please? Where the money comes from for that $65,000 and things like that, please?
Sure, so we have a, back in March of this year, we had the joint council meeting where a resolution was passed authorizing us to apply for a grant, both in the city of Nina and Manasha. We both did that, we were both successful. Amy Barker talked earlier about the 3.2 million dollar project, that's for both bridges, so in rough terms, our bridge is 1.6 million, a little less than that was, was what our estimate came in at. So, we have a grant amount of $768,000, and what the DNR does for these types of situations, they realize that you have initial project expenses that you have to get started with on a project of this magnitude. So, they allow you to check a little box on the grant agreement that says you, you get some advance dollars, and in this case, that's $384,000. And Nina, Nina has already signed her grant agreement, they've already requested their, their advance, I don't believe they have that yet, but it usually doesn't take too long to get that. So, what we'd like, like to do is to do, sign the grant, get that money coming here, and that would be the funds that we would use for this initial $65,075. Now, that $65,075 represents two things, one will be on the Board of Public Works agenda later, that Mark will address, but that is for grave engineering, and so that is for some survey work, some geotechnical coordination, some Phase One environmental work, schematic design, inter-agency coordination, and things like that. So, that, that amount is $36,200. And the second part of the $65,075 is related to project as well, but it is for a, an agreement that will be executed by the city of Nina for, with River Valley testing, and that is specifically for soil borings that will be done in the riverbed. That's their primary service in this con, in this project, but Nina will execute that agreement, it's just what River Valley preferred, to have one agency sign that agreement, but we will be seeking to have an MOU, some kind of understanding with Nina, that we will pay for, you know, for our half of that services. And that the maximum amount of that service to the city of Manash is estimated to be $28,875. It could come in a little bit less than that. So, that, that's how we got to the $65,075. And it's really to get the project underway. There is a, if everything fell into place perfectly, we got the DNR permitting, we got to the final design, we got to the bidding, from what the engineer is telling us, there's a, there is a possibility that we could get this project started in late 2016. I know everybody's been saying 17, and it could very well be 17, but if all the, if everything fell into place, there, there's a possibility, at least from what we've been told, that it could start in late 2016. So, that's, I think that kind of summarizes things.
I have one, one more question, Brian, for, for everybody in the public out, out there watching TV. We talked about, and what my question was for you was to finish off beside the two bridges, in between, we have the land in there, and my question was, and I didn't know, 'cause I wasn't at that meeting, so that's why you and I got together. My question to you was, and I didn't know, but are we gonna be paving a route through the, the two cities, and, and how is that gonna be done? If you could explain that to everybody, please?
No, there won't be any paving of, of any route there, there's some, some, there's sidewalks over much of that area that you talk about. It's basically an on-street connection, there may be some, there will be some signage, maybe some charos, things like that, so people can clearly, you know, get through that part of Dodie Island.
And, and I learned this along with Chief Steika, if you could share what charos mean, so everybody knows, 'cause I did, I saw signs, and I saw Tim's car, and I pulled in, says, "Chief Steika, what are those on the road?"
Well, maybe one or the other...
'Cause they were new, they were new only like, what, two weeks ago?
I'm probably not the expert on charos, maybe Mark or the mayor wanna talk about that.
Could you mention that, just so people know what they are, as long as we're on this subject, for the, for the route?
Charos are simply a way of letting the motorists know that that travel way is being shared with bicycles. We've, we've indicated and made the choice to designate those streets as a route for bicycles, we, there may not be enough room to put in a exclusive and dedicated bike lane, so we put down these symbols to alert the motorists and to educate the motorists that it's meant to be a shared travel, traffic lane.
One question that Tim and I both had, and we were wondering, 'cause we didn't know what they were, and Tim had to find out, make a call to you, I think it was, and how are we going to teach the public what they are? Because I'm sure there's more people than just us two that don't know what they were, or, you know, we didn't know what they were, and is there any plan, like, any, is a horizon out already? Okay, so I was thinking maybe put it in there, maybe something written in there, but is there, or are we just, you know, you get phone calls and teach people?
Right, I mean, probably by just asking the question and then letting the chief and you know, and then people will ask you, and then it'll spread from there, but adjacent communities have been using them for a period of time as well.
Yeah, I've seen Appleton has them, and I, I didn't know what they were neither, and I saw we have them, so, all right, thank you. Thanks, Brian.
Alderman Taylor?
Director, seeing the $65,000 is this budget adjustment, are we putting up the money out of some funds right now, and then we're waiting for the grant, is that what this is?
I believe the plan is to use the grant advance to pay that $65,000. Is that correct, Brian?
The grant advance?
Correct, so, $384,000 of the $768,000 grant can be drawn immediately after approval of the grant.
Okay.
So, that would be used as, as the first dollars in.
Brian, can you condense the neighborhood that this trail's going through? Can you condense, I heard you had a, a meeting out there with that neighborhood, and could you just tell us the, the feelings of the neighborhood?
I would say there were some mixed feelings there, there were, there were a few folks that were, were less than thrilled with the route going through their, their neighborhood, but I, I think it was important, it was important to note that afterward, I think we had some folks stuck around, and we had some good discussions with, for example, the, the approach on Matheson Street as you, as you cross the river there, there were some, some good ideas that came out of there in terms of, you know, routing the, the approach a little bit differently, and, you know, it's, it's interesting, sometimes, you know, these meetings, you know, it's the, sort of the, the negative folks, they sort of take over the main meeting, but sometimes afterwards, you, you get other folks coming up to you and saying, you know, "I kinda liked what I heard, and have you thought about this, and have you thought about that?" So, I, I, I think during the, the public portion of the meeting, we heard one thing, but sort of afterward, we heard some, some other more positive things.
Fifty, sixty, forty, seventy, thirty?
Yeah, fifty-fifty, probably.
Now, saying that with that neighborhood, have we looked at alternatives? For instance, I heard a good idea that we might be, we could go behind the sewage plant along the waterfront there, so we would have complete waterfront access instead of going through a neighborhood that 50 percent of the people don't want, and then when we get to the point on Fox Street, then we would cross, make the crossing at that point. I would hope that, you know, we would at least share these ideas and look at these different scenarios, and try to get the most waterfront-friendly, since again, that's what we're, we're aiming for, is this waterfront community, and I'd rather have them going along the water than through a neighborhood.
The one, the one thing I add to that is that that route has been talked about with the engineer, but that, that would be an additional cost, 'cause that, that was not contemplated in the grant application, so there'd be additional paving, additional costs to that option.
We haven't seen any of that, you know, and we have questions from the public, and I haven't seen any engineering on that, or, or what it would cost, or how much land is back there, you know?
That will come out in some of the schematic design in this, this first phase, you'll, I, I believe you'll see that, routing of that through the island.
I would certainly hope that option is looked into.
Thank you. When we accept this grant, are we committed, then? We accepted the grant, when we take this, these $65,000, we're fully committed at that point, aren't we?
Well, yes, we're, we're committed, and our, Peggy has reminded me that we are sticking our neck out here a little bit, $65,000 worth of spending. If for some reason this project would just fall completely flat, which I think based on what we heard from Amy earlier, is chances at are slim and none, but should it happen, we are expending these dollars, and, and in the grant agreement, it says, if you don't build a project as, as planned, you have to pay DNR back, but I, I truly am not expecting... the project as planned, you have to pay DNR back, but I truly am not expecting that in this case.
Well, you could find anything once you start digging into that water over there.
Yeah, I mean, that's why, that's why-
We're finding things at the Third Street Bridge, and that's just a small section.
You're right, some, something could come up, and so-
There's going to be some kind of snail somewhere in there.
It could be, yeah.
And is this the route now? This is not the route that I saw once before.
No, that's, that's an old graphic that's in there. No, the approach is wrong on that map.
Which part?
The, it's coming off of Matheson Street. That was, that was the concept, the last updated concept. So, the approach is on the south shore of the Fox River is incorrect.
My understanding when we met over at the park, and then where does it tie into?
Would tie into right at the bend, just below the arrow that says Manasha locks. So, right where the chain link fence is at the curve.
I can't see that from this picture.
Well-
The chain link fence.
That's right where the first bend is.
I know where the chain link fence is for the Trestle Trail.
Yep, that's where it would connect to.
Okay.
You can't see that on that picture, Dan?
Well, I can read the sign.
My glasses aren't even that good, so.
Okay, so we're committed at that point, because I thought there was more steps to this, and now if we accept this, we're in it full-fledged and off and flying.
Yes, I would say that's correct.
Because there was some real apprehension at that meeting over at one park that, over by the sewage plant, where this thing is entering, going across to Manasha, and that neighbor is not too thrilled about this whole proposal. And we are supposed to get maybe some other options here?
Well, I referred to that earlier, but that, I think the neighbor you're talking about was a little less apprehensive when we were going to kind of reroute the approach by the river there, so that was one of the conversations we had, and he was, felt better, I think, after the meeting.
How long before we, the land portion that we make this a dedicated bike route, and we start restricting parking, and we have restricted parking all over for bike trails right now, and I don't, I foresee that coming really quick.
I think that the route through the island, I think, it seems like there's a lot of interest in that, and I, that will come out in the schematic design, you know, things about, you know, the charos and signage and no parking and this and that, that I think there's plenty of time for that to be analyzed.
Yeah, I noticed the charos now that he mentioned it. Are there different sized charos? Because I've seen Nina uses a much smaller one than we do, and my neighbor is very concerned about his grandchildren now, they think that's the bike route, and where these charos are is where you ride your bike. Where's the safety for these kids? They see these charos, well, that's the new bike route. Was there any concern about where you're putting these charos and what size they are?
I actually kind of like the bigger ones. I could see them a little better than the ones in Nina, but yeah, I'm not the, like I say, not the charo expert.
Are the charos go on forever now, or is that some kind of grant from something else, or did the city just decide that we'd go with charos and?
We put charos in the bike routes. That's a little off-topic for this item, but we did paint them on current bike routes that were already listed as bike routes in the city.
Okay, back to the trail. Brian, how do you get this figured in in your budget for maintenance? We're always having maintenance problems with parks. Some people say it's maintained fine, some people say we got to maintain it more. I asked that question, never got it answered at the big joint meeting with Nina, Manasha.
Well, trails, they gave us a lot of thought today. You know, trails don't really demand the day-to-day maintenance that we, you know, we cut a lot of grass, and that's, that's real maintenance-intensive. You know, trails, you know, we have 10-year history with the Trestle Trail. We don't spend it, we don't put a ton of manpower out there on a daily basis, you know, even on a weekly basis. So, you know, trails, I guess probably the beauty of them is they're not real, real labor-intensive, and we have 10-year experience on using very, you know, durable, you know, materials, you know, even the decking, they've made improvements on the decking. So, you know, yes, we did have some expenses after a decade of use on the Trestle Trail, but I wouldn't say an excessive, you know, amount of money to take care of that. I guess we're thinking there'll be a similar experience here, you know, and not a, not a lot of day-to-day maintenance out there, and nothing is maintenance-free, of course, but we think it's, we think it's a good value, I mean, from a maintenance standpoint. It's not, we're not planting grass, and we're not, you know, taking care of it on a, really a day-to-day basis.
I kind of agree with that. I ride that Trestle Trail a lot, and it's starting to get pretty bumpy. That's going to be a major expense at some point. To what degree do you let these bumps occur in there, and what, and what degree do we say we got to remedy the problem? If you drive, ride your bike fast across here, sometimes you're glad you get to the pavement because it's like going over a washboard.
Yeah, I haven't heard that until now, that there was a problem from a bumpiness standpoint.
Well, to what degree do you leave the bumpiness into it, and then you say, "Well, it needs total maintenance." We just stuck $26,000 into painting and fixing some signs and some posts. This is a major expense when we resurface it, and I don't know how long, what the life is expected.
Well, I think the decking has like a 25-year warranty. I think we may, we could address that when the decking starts to wear out, but that's, you know, a ways down the road yet.
Well, I'm just looking into the future. What's our long-term obligations here when, when you say it's getting hard to take care of what we have?
Well, for the Trestle Trail, that would be a shared decision with the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this whole project, it's a great project, but it's the cart before the horse, the cart before the horse. For instance, the success of the Trestle Trail on Broad Street is tremendous. People that live there within two blocks have no place to park. They have a family function, family parks two, three blocks away to get there. There's no parking facilities. I think there's six stalls. We created a problem there, and because of the social economics, we don't want to take care of that problem. If it was out where the incomes were higher, we'd probably take care of the problem. Now, what we're doing here on Doty Island, Matheson, Fox Street, creating another trailhead. No parking. We have a park there. What's coming next? $80,000 for a parking lot for this trailhead? We're not even addressing it, we're not even talking about it, you know? It's a great project, but here we go. $65,000 here, $100,000 here, $200,000 here. Even if they get the full amount, it doesn't sound like they're going to let us have the trail for free. It sounds like we got to put some skin in it at some point, up to the $200,000, $300,000 plus 20 stall parking lot in Shepherd Park, Director Tonka. What did you tell those people in that meeting over there with, when they talked about everybody parked in front of their house on the weekends and at night?
I don't, I don't believe, at least at this point, that a parking lot is needed there. There is some street parking there. I said at the meeting there, and I've said it before, that I think people use, will utilize this loop trail in segments. Yes, there will be people that enjoy the complete loop, but just as we've seen with the Trestle Trail, you know, they use that as a segment. I think you'll see that segment still being used. I think you'll see the Herb and Dolly Smith Park segment being used. I think people will, will utilize the new trestle on the Manasha side as part of their experience of the existing Trestle Trail. I think a lot of the use will be segmented, but still having the entire loop, and you have multiple places to park along that loop. I really don't think that, you know, you're going to see, you know, the park down there inundated with cars.
I disagree. I think it's going to be a trailhead myself for Doty Island. That's how I look at it. I look at this map here. All the property along the lake is city-owned. We would be impacting one property, one residential property at the end of Fox Street if we would use that route. Now, if we got to build parking lots, and there's other additional costs, maybe those costs, I haven't seen anything here that spells this whole project out to us, and maybe by offsetting those costs, by not having the parking lot there and putting a trail out there and offsetting those costs, but we just keep, yeah, it's a good, feel-good project, and just keep throwing the money at it. And I don't, I'd like to see the whole project laid out in front of us, what we think everything is going to cost. Before, as Alderman Zalinski said, you know, we get in too far, and we get the hook in us, and that, "Oh, you can't back out now, you can't back out now." $100,000 here, you know? I think we spent over, I think this year we spent more on trails than we have on roads, and our roads are showing it. City's got some serious problems with our roads, and I, I can't support it till I concede this budget out, and we don't know what we're going to run into. You just said that. We don't know what we're going to run into out there. Now, we're going to take on another bridge. State of Wisconsin said we got to take on the Racine Street Bridge. Now, we have another bridge that we have to take on, and maintenance cost, Alderman Zalinski's asking, what are the maintenance costs? What can the, what can the city expect for these projects? I mean, it's just, it's poor government, that we just keep going down the, nipping away at it and not looking at it as a full project, taking care of the residential needs of the people that live there, their homes are there, and it's, I think we need to take a deep breath, back up, and say, "Let's look at this in a comprehensive way with the whole project together, and the dollars that the community can expect."
May I just add one more comment to that? So, you will at some point see a schematic design, and you potentially will pay up to $65,075, and if you, if the council looks at the design and says, "We want to change this, we want to get out of this, we want to stop this, we don't think it's a bad project," you have every right to bail out of the project at that point. So, that, you do have that choice, and you will see a nice design, a nice concept layout of this trail in the coming months.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, Brian, as I said, I was not at that meeting with Manasha, Nina, Manasha. Now, was there a vote, Mayor? I mean, was there a vote on this? Is this, is this a done deal? Did, well, no, let me, let me go back first. Where's Nina on this? Has Nina voted on this yet?
Yeah, Nina has signed their grant agreement, submitted it, so they're in.
They're in. Did they have the resolution, like we were voting?
Yeah, it was a joint resolution in March. Yeah, they both.
Okay.
Both communities signed it.
Once you sign the grant and send it in, you checkmark that box, then, then we're in?
Well, you're, you're taking a step of $65,075. That's the step you're really taking.
Right, and Nina did that already, and so?
I'm not sure where Nina, they have CIP discussions, I'm not exactly sure where they're at with their CIP process, and if they've, you know, allocated their $300,000. I'm not sure how they've done that. I know they're talking about that.
Okay, so the meeting, Mayor, that meeting in March, was that when we voted on this? Was this the vote to approve this?
The meeting in March, at the meeting in March, there is a resolution, it's the second where I was here, that they approved a joint resolution, so both councils approved a resolution to allow both cities to apply for this grant.
Okay.
And once the grant came, if the grant was approved, then it would come back to both councils, or at least to the Manasha Council, I believe it was to both councils, and we would vote to accept that grant. If we accept that grant this evening, any money that we spend would have to be returned if we do not complete the project. But we have to, and some of the things that we're talking about tonight, the testing and design, we have, we have to do that. We have to spend money regardless if we accept the grant or not, and those are going to be sunk costs. If we find that there's snails, I think you said-
Snails.
-that are in the, in the way, and we can't do the project, we can't find that out until we do those engineering and testing items regardless.
So, in the grant then, Brian, like you said, I think, just to refresh my memory, the grant then, we'll get part of that money, and that's going to pay, that's what's paying for all this testing-
Yes.
...and everything.
So, yes.
To find out if there's snails down there.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, we'd be paying it out of our own, well, our own pockets, correct?
It'll be part of our contribution, one way or the other, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. I caught out of the corner of my eye a Nina Alderman going, "No." Did Nina voted on this already? I still see him saying, "No."
On the ridge? So, I should comment just for people in the public that are watching this, that one of the Nina Alderman is here, and said it's on their next agenda.
Two of them.
Two of them, sorry. Well, one of them spoke. Alderman Zalinski, did you?
Yes, I was at that park, I'm on the park board, so I was at that park meeting. One of their biggest concerns were facilities, and they said the facilities are locked right now. Where are these, this trail that's going across to Manasha is going to be a fishing pier, basically, and that's a very popular fishing area. We do not have facilities for these people to go to the bathroom right now. Where are we going to provide this? And how much is, it was a very expensive cost to renovate these bathrooms, and we're talking about parking also. Where is the long-term plan for this park? Is there any discussion on that?
We have some projects within the CIP budget, and one of them is the, the opening of the bathroom. We talked about doing some, some work on the walls there to make the bathrooms safer. They have kind of a little cubby hole built in that's kind of a, you know, place for unwanted behavior, let's say. So, we talked about making some renovations with our own crew to move some doorways and actually get those, get those bathrooms opened up.
But when you start moving doorways and stuff, I'm in the construction trades, you bring in the whole gamut of ADA and everything else, it's just not, you leave a bathroom alone, then you start touching it, the costs really start to spiral out of control, and we're talking about maybe a new bathroom at that point.
Well, we did some modifications a while back at Jefferson Park. Sometimes it's fairly simple for ADA standpoint, if you have a, you know, maybe you remove one stall, so you get the turning radius, and, you know, it's not so hard to raise mirrors and sinks and things like that, so sometimes it's not, not all that bad.
But some of the listed things that they were talking about is where you can't see where it was happening, and they were talking about cameras and stuff. I know that the other park over, I think it's Fritzy Park, has cameras, and they were saying, "Can we have cameras here?" Because the neighborhood watch does not want to be the watch 24/7, because this is going to be, these are going to be open 24/7, because this trail is open 24/7.
So, what we wanted to do with those, the bathroom doors, is to get them in the front of the shelter. Right now, it's at the side, and you have these places where people can hide on the side. We want to get the doors in the front, improve lighting, so a police car going by can really see what's going on right in front of the building. That was kind of what we talked about.
Yeah, a little bit, but then they said trees and everything else, and the parking was a big, big, big issue, because the guy at the head of the trail did not want him parking in front of his house 24/7. I don't know if there's an event or a run or whatever, those are minor, but you go down at the end, beginning of the trail, those houses are basically parked in for any of their guests. I don't know how that was addressed, and like, Alderman Taylor said this stuff starts to, these are the features that people are going to want after the trail goes in.
Well, again, I think the neighbor you're talking about was the person we talked to afterward, and he was, I think he could characterize it by saying he felt better about kind of shifting the approach of the trail a little bit, and we talked about some landscaping and some, you know, things like that to kind of, you know, mitigate some of his concerns.
Okay. Alderman Taylor?
I'm trying to catch up here, okay? I had parking lot now, we have toilets, doors, mirrors, lighting, security cameras. Just keeps adding up, folks adding up. Something I wanted to say, somebody had this concept of loop the lake, okay? And it's a great project, but we had a young man speak here tonight, and I think he has some valid points here. What if that loop the lake, you got to Garfield Avenue, and you went down Garfield Avenue and continued into the Gilbert, all the money we put into the Gilbert project over there, connect the Gilbert project, we got a new bridge coming with bike lanes, and bring it downtown to our downtown to benefit our restaurants instead of just- and bring it downtown to our downtown to benefit our restaurants instead of just having a, a quick, whoop, you know, loop this. Maybe this isn't for us, this, this, this portion of the trail. We already have the trestle that we initiated, this community, and I think it was one-point-two million dollar project that this community got this trestle built. Maybe we need to look at this young man's ideas and, and other ideas for more of a comprehensive plan. I just said, why not go along the lake here and stay out of these people's backyard and front yards and their neighborhood and their side yards? And Brian said he's going to bring back something, but I haven't heard that they're going to have Plan, Plan A, Plan B. We haven't even looked at that. We're just, like you said, here we got, now we got a renovation of a pavilion with bathrooms that has been closed because of vandalism over and over and over. They smashed the toilets, they smashed the sinks, they locked it, okay? And now we're going to go back to fixing all this up. Where's that money coming from? I think it's a viable idea this young man here, this young man has here, and I think there should be a committee or a commission formed here to, to really look at this before we start getting in, getting the hook in us where we can't back out. And it just keeps adding up. And let's face it, Manasha has a unique financial situation. I'll leave it at that.
Typically, I don't speak on these things, but I do, I am the chair of this committee and I do have the ability to speak. And I am the chair of this committee and I have the ability to speak. Point well taken and I will speak. Does this council, does this council? I am the chair, I make the, I, I will decide on the point of order and I do have the ability to speak.
And I will appeal if you have to give us a point of order.
What is your point of order?
I ask for a point of order, Mayor.
You must state your point of order.
You cannot debate from the chair, you have to give up your, well, so that might be so. You meet or dabble, I'll run the meeting.
And I have said the point of order was denied. If the council would like to overrule that denial, they have the opportunity to take a vote at this point. Does the council want to override that point of order? I don't see anything. Anyone who would like to do that? I am, I don't need to ask the attorney at this point. My comment is, does this council ever have anything positive to say? We have this great project here today, the public is rallying about this project, and here we are, talking about how terrible it is and how it, how a bike is going to ride in front of someone's house and how we have to provide parking lots for bikes. Bikes don't need parking lots. And how we maybe should fix our bathroom in Shepherd Park. Well, maybe we should fix the bathroom regardless, that has nothing to do with this trail. But let's add some quality of life aspects to this community and make it a good place to live rather than complaining about adding these things. We've had plans for many years to connect the trestle back to the downtown through Gilbert, along the Riverwalk, and those will be things that we'll be doing in the future that'll connect back to this trail. But we don't need to constantly be bashing everything that this community wants and everything that's positive about living here. And I'm tired of it. And I'll shut up. Is there any more discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there's going to be a sign on this trestle, "Bikes only." That's what you're saying, Mayor. You just said, "Bikes only." Nobody's going to drive their car down there to a trailhead and walk this trail.
Don't say that.
See, now you're the one being naked to that said it's only bikes.
I did not say that.
And I'm not here to debate you, Mayor. I am not here to debate you.
Go ahead.
And we will get a ruling on this because you have to give up your seat.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor and I don't know what it was anymore, it was a while back. There was a motion by Alderman Langdon and Alderman Benner to approve Resolution 3315. There's no other discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on Roll Call 6-2.
Okay. We also have someone here for Item 9. It's Resolution 3515 and it's for a budget amendment, a budget adjustment for the purchase of land to replace parking displaced by construction of the parking ramp within the Broad Street parking lot. We have a motion for this item at this, oh, Attorney Captain, before we move forward, did you want to comment about where we're sitting on this and what our obligations are? And apparently you had notes somewhere, it looks like? No? Okay.
I did have an opportunity to look at the council action that was taking, taken on September 21st, which did approve an offer to purchase the property at 320 Shoot Street. What that means is that this resolution follows because there was an obligation in that offer to purchase to close on this property at 320 Shoot Street. A budget adjustment does require a two-thirds majority. There is a legal obligation to close on this property. It was, like I said, approved by a majority of the common council and failure to do that could expose the city to legal action for failing to follow contractual obligation.
So at this point, do we have a motion regarding Resolution 35? Or do we have questions for the attorney? Looks like one of those two is going to do it. Oh, Alderman Langdon?
I have questions for the attorney, but aren't we, don't we do the motion first and then discuss?
We can do that, sure. If someone would like to make the motion. Okay. Alderman Benner?
I'll make the motion approving Resolution 35-15, Resolution approving a 2015 budget adjustment for the purchase of land to replace parking displaced by the construction of the parking ramp within the Broad Street parking lot and the accompanying borrowing to be included within the 2016 capital improvement program borrowing.
There's a motion in a second. Mark, did you have some questions, sir?
I do. Attorney Captain, for the redevelopment agreement between the City of Manasha, Wisconsin and developer entered into this seventh day of April 1997. On the last page, number 20, termination rights, could you explain that to me? I don't see anywhere, I don't see anywhere where it says that the city will be liable. Well, here's a whole thing. I don't see, there's nothing in there that says anything the city's liable and doesn't say anywhere where the city's committed to the parking stalls and on number 20 there, termination rights. The way I read it is McCrone already terminated his rights because he wasn't up here one time at all to say, hey, you're taking away my parking. And he is part of the developers in this situation. And then the other thing with it for me, it's just way, way too much money. The parking lot, Alderman Taylor, myself, went there, drove there yesterday, and it's going to have to be redone. It's worn, so we're going to have to pay for that. There's already moss seed, moss grass coming up through the cracks, there's just, there's more than one crack. So Greg, wouldn't that have to be redone? I mean, according to city ordinances and, and the fence there, it's all rusted and the guard is all rusted to protect the fence from vehicles going into it. That parking lot ain't going to last very long. And according to our city standards, that parking lot is out of date and needs to be redone. So that's going to cost us more than two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars, which is way too much for me. So I spoke my piece off the attorney.
We have two kind of different questions here, so the first one was regarding...
I just spoke my, what?
That's fine. Let's start out with the question for the attorney about the termination rights or obligations for the current agreement.
In the agreement that I was referring to was the purchase agreement for 320 Shoot Street, and I believe that the question is related to redevelopment agreement with McCrone Downtown Development LLC from 1997. When the city was looking at the downtown Manasha Development Agreement and particularly the framework, I know that April 7th, before the administration committee, I have a document here that I provided to the administration committee, which are the same members of the common council, contingencies. I identified, provide alternate parking for McCrone Downtown Development Agreement, 120 stalls. This was an issue that had to be taken care of prior to any opinion by the attorney that it was appropriate to enter into an agreement with Manasha Downtown Development. I know that on May 4th, at the common council, there was a discussion item relative to the alternate parking for McCrone Downtown Development. I know that on May 18th, the common council approved an amendment to this agreement, which is dated, set the 7th of April 1997. The one that, the question was just asked of me, that amendment, number one, was approved by the common council on May 18th, that the City of Manasha would, it was changed to add Germania Hall parking lot or any other parking lot that was agreed to by the parties. And then, of course, the offer to purchase 320 Shoot Street, which then was approved by a majority of the common council and I know has been executed. The closing, by the way, was already to have occurred. One thing I did forget to mention that unless the timing of the purchase or unless the, there's an agreement by the owners, the city's failure to approve the financing will result in a breach of contract by the City of Manasha, that, that's just the way it is. And I'm talking about the...
But what about the termination rights?
I'm talking about a breach of contract on the purchase of 320 Shoot Street.
But it does...
That's what I'm talking about.
No, but what about the termination rights? I want that question answered. You haven't answered that for me yet. What happens on that termination rights? You haven't answered that for me yet.
And I don't believe that this is, this is not an item that is on the agenda?
Sure is, it's part of the, uh, uh, vote tonight because we're voting on buying this parking lot and I'm going to go back, attorney, that you talk about the amendment that we went through in 2015. Isn't it, you know, that, that was in our packet on the May 18th, but an alimony, as an alibi, I did not go through it totally, but it's an agreement that was in our packet. Why was it in there? If it was in there for just our records, but isn't in there, that's an agreement, then why was it in, in our packet? If you or the mayor could answer that.
I'm not quite sure what the question is. Why wasn't this?
Why was that in the packet then? That agreement from 1997?
On May 18th?
Yes.
Because we amended it, you have the amendment ready.
Right, okay, so the agreement then, what is the attorney's obligation? I mean, that's an agreement. Shouldn't we have gone through that agreement and the, and the attorney advise us to give us legal counsel on everything? So we should understand what that means? Because all she said at the 53-minute mark of the May 18th minute, number three and four, number three is a development agreement bind between the City of Manasha, Wisconsin and Manasha Downtown Development LLC. Number four is the amendment to redevelopment agreement, which is this, between the City of Manasha, Wisconsin, developer Downtown Development dated April 7th, 1997. Clerk Aliasi said that CA Captain explained the amendment to the redevelopment agreement. That would be what I just handed you. At the 53-minute mark, Mayor and attorney, all the attorney said was that we are committed to 120 stalls. I wrote it down, Pam said. And she said also, I'm tying this in with number three. So at the 53-minute mark of the May 18th meeting, so there's nothing in there that says we are committed and we would have a penalty for breaking anything. In fact, to me, the McCrone broke the, broke it when he let the parking ramp go on top of his parking stalls without any comment from him whatsoever.
Is there a question that I'm supposed to answer? I'm not...
The termination rights. You still haven't answered that, my question. I want to know the question on termination rights. It says they're written, if a given written notice, either McCrone or the city, and it will be terminated. So why would we be in legal liability right now if we don't purchase the parking lots?
This McCrone Downtown Development LLC agreement is dated 1997. The terms that the developer was required to follow have already been performed. This termination right has to do with, there's a recognition that the development will require substantial financial resources and commitments, which may not be available before the parties begin to perform under the terms of this agreement. They're nonetheless willing to proceed with the activities and undertaking described herein with full appreciation that the costs and risks of doing so are their own respectively and that a closing may not occur unless otherwise specifically required by this agreement. That the city shall fail to acquire the site. And I guess my question would be, did the city acquire the site? I was not here in 1997.
I would assume so, correct?
Uh, the city did acquire the site and perform its other obligations or if the developer does not generate the required financing and perform its other obligations. I believe that McCrone is in that building, correct? And that it was constructed? Then the agreement can be terminated. This termination of rights provision is for, and we do put these in agreements oftentimes because each of the parties recognize and understand that prior to actually constructing, and the same thing with the office building, prior to constructing it, there are going to be expenses and things that are incurred by either of the parties and, you know, certain permissions need to be granted in the, what I'm familiar with most recently is the office building and that there had to be a TIF that was created, there were some contingencies. There was approval by the Plan Committee... There was approval by the plan commission of the sale of some properties. There was some grant funding. So there were some contingencies that needed to be met prior to the actual entering into the agreement and the beginning of construction. That's similar to what this particular termination rights clause is. The city did acquire the site. McCrone's been there. Like I said, this was 1997. There is an ongoing obligation, however, in a different paragraph, which is Paragraph 11, the, oh, not Paragraph 11, excuse me. But there's an obligation here about the city for a term not to exceed 99 years, which I did let the common council know that that obligation was in there and asked the common council what they wished to do. And they did decide on May 18, 2015, to approve an amendment, which was done, and it is signed. And again, the agreement that is that pertains to this specific budget adjustment and resolution has to do with 320 Shoot Street. That other McCrone agreement is, is a separate issue?
Well, then how can we have an amendment on it? Then it's, we can't have the amendment to go with this if you're saying this is out the window. How can we have an amendment on it?
I'm not, do we have any more time? Okay, well, we need to take a break for a minute so we can change his tape.